Call the meeting to order. I want to welcome everybody here today. Councilor Fair, I'd like to ask you to bring the opening, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I usually do after Summer in the City Weekend, I get to bring the opening and speak a little bit about that. It was a great time where community comes together. Spent a fair bit of time there, saw pretty much all of our council members are well, and it was great to see that everybody is out. Everybody's usually in a good mood, and they connect with people that haven't met for a long time. People are also happy to be there and meet people from other communities and other areas of the country, actually, as well. I met people from all over the southeast, and I think I heard that there were people from, as far, I heard, as far ago. Many people came for the concerts, and of course, young folks came because they love the rides that are made available to them. The organizers did such an amazing job to organize the event. Thousands of hours going through preparation for this weekend. Graham Pollak and his team worked tirelessly all weekend. I saw him all over the place, and it's great to see. Special thanks to his team and all the volunteers that made such a great effort to make the weekend better for us. Jerry Clark had a great time performing to a great crowd on Friday night with her country music, and I, for one, really enjoyed her performance. Harlequin and Honey Moon Suite put on a great performance on Saturday night for the rockers in the area. And then on Sunday morning, Danny Platt and his worship team led the assembly in a wonderful time of worship. It was nice to see the community do that. Then Mark Hughes challenged the audience with a great message. What was especially great to see was the different churches participating in this service. It was great to worship alongside other people from various other churches. I think it was especially great to see a coming-together, if you will. I think it's great for a community to do that. Then on Sunday night, Manic Drive gave a great performance to another crowd, so we saw most of the music generates catered to by the headliners. And they raised over $9,000 for charities in the area as well, so that was, it's another blessing, so. We also saw much local talent of all types and generates playing on the big stage. It's almost like a talent search of sorts. Some of these bands are up-and-comers, and many have been playing to a local audience for many years. We have so much talent in the area, and that's so great to see. Hopefully, we will see some of the performers we saw here in an amateur role go on to perform to wonderful venues all over the country and possibly around the world. This does not happen by accident. They need to be given opportunities to better learn their trade. I think we can be proud of all our local performance and the different cultures we have in our community. Many people are not fortunate enough to be able to travel, so it's great to offer them a venue each year where they can travel to foreign countries without leaving their hometown. So I'm already looking forward to next year.
Thank you, Councilor Fair, and I do want to echo your sentiment as well of the organizers obviously did an excellent job of making it, and I know you say that you saw Graham Pollak everywhere on the weekend, but he was working throughout the year, and his committee was throughout the year, very, very, very good work, very hard work, and rewarding for all of us, their efforts. Let's move to, we have the agenda now in front of us, and just one change in the agenda in that we will have a scheduled delegation of the Calvary Chapel at 7:45 or thereabouts, after the variations. So can I have someone move the amended agenda, please? Councilor Funk, second by Councilor Fair. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor. We have the minutes from June 5th of our regular council meeting. You've had a chance to review those. Can I have someone move those, please? Councilor Siemens, second by Councilor Swagstra. Any discussion? All those in favor. Carried. We have no business arising from the minutes. We will now move to the public hearing. Variation V 2018-09. This is in regards to 320 Main Street. This is on page seven of council's handbook. I'll close the council meeting, open the public hearing. Mr. Workinteen, can I have you introduce this, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. For members of council, this application for variance is being applied for with the owner of 320 Main Street and the applicant for the variance being Sky Prom Marketing, Inc. Purpose of the variance application is to allow a fence with a maximum height of 10 feet, whereas the permitted height within the C2 commercial community zone is six and one-half feet. The applicant has built the fence surrounding an existing, or I should say, a new air exchange and HVAC units on the subject property in connection with a recent renovation project. Notices as required under the Planning Act have been issued. There are no registered comments or correspondence for the file. With respect to the application, the area in question does appear fairly small, with a rough sketch of the area provided on page 14 of your agenda package. There are no particular concerns from administration, therefore, recommendation is for council to approve.
Thank you. We do have the applicant here today. Is there anyone here wishing to object or have any questions? Anyone here wishing to object or have any questions? I'll ask for a third time. Is there anyone here wishing to object or have any questions? Seeing none, does the applicant wish to speak? Are there any questions for the applicant? Thank you. I will close the public hearing. I will open the council meeting. Council, how would you like to proceed? I know you've all had a chance to look at this, since if you look out that window, you can see exactly what we're talking about. Councilor Fair.
I'd move to approve it.
Thank you. Second by Councilor Penner. Thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The fence is actually necessary to protect the HVAC equipment that's there, and I see the fence is actually there already, and it actually looks, it blends in with the building very, very well, and I think that it's a unique situation, and I'm sure that they'll be happy to have that fence there.
Thank you. Councilor Penner, anything further?
I don't know. Nothing.
Anything further from council? Councilor Siemens.
Your question for administration.
Go ahead.
City manager, through you, sorry, Mr. Mayor, through you. City engineer report says the fence height should not be granted for the entire property. Is it so, or is it just for this? If we approve this, it is only for this application, or is that, can you just put a potential for?
Sorry, this is for administration. Yeah.
Does that then allow them to attempt the fence anywhere they want to on that property?
No, the application is specifically for the existing location, and that's what was advertised, and then that would be the limit of the variance.
Very good. Thank you. Anything further from council? Anything in closing? Call for the question. All those in favor. Carried. Thank you. All right, we'll move to 6B, variation V 2018-10. This is in regards to 404 First Street in Steinbach. This is on page 16. Council, you've had a chance to review this. I'm going to close the council meeting, open the public hearing. Mr. Workinteen, I'll ask you to introduce this, please.
For Mr. Mayor and members of council, this application for variance is actually related to a subdivision application which appears later on in the agenda, however, with respect to the order of operations, the variance should be dealt with first. And in order to introduce it, the owner of 404 First Street, the variance filed 2018-10, and the applicant is Abram and Helena Hebert. Purpose of the variance application is twofold. Firstly, to allow an overall site area of 4,247 square feet for a residential property within the C1 commercial neighborhood zone, whereas a minimum of 5,500 square feet is required, which is indicated by proposed lot B. Secondly, to allow a rear yard setback of 8.1 feet for residential property within the C1 commercial neighborhood zone, whereas a minimum of 25 feet is required, which would be affecting both proposed lots A and proposed lots B. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the current property in order to build an additional house on the newly created lot. Notices as required under the Planning Act have been issued. There was one piece of correspondence received on the file that council members would have received a copy of in their mail bins earlier today. With respect to the application, it is noted that the current applicants were the owners of the property in 2006, at which time they submitted a similar application at that time. The decision of council at that time was to deny. Recommendation from administration is that council also deny the application for variance.
Thank you. We do have the applicant here today. Does the applicant wish to speak?
Yes.
Okay, all right. The rule of speaking here is that you have to take the podium, and you have to state your name and address, even though, I think we know you, but you do have to state your name and address. This is video recorded, and then I'll give you a few minutes to speak. Go ahead.
Abram and Helena Hebert. We own the property, that house sits on the corner there, rental property for many years, and we live a little bit out of town, and we plan to retire and build a small retirement home right next to our property. That's the reason.
Thank you. Anything further to add? Are there any questions for the applicant at this time? Seeing none? Thank you. We may call you up again.
Thank you.
Anyone here wishing to object or have any questions on this file? Okay, I'll ask you to take the podium and state your name and your address.
My name is Ernie Clausen. I'm speaking on behalf of the owners of lot 408 First Street, which is immediately next door, facing onto First Street. So this is written by them. Is there a limit to how long I can speak?
There is, but I'll tell you when you get there.
Dear city council members, thank you for alerting us to the possible change to the bylaws in our neighborhood. We object to the proposed changes for 404 First Street. This proposed house would use Barkman Street for access, which already has a busy flow through of through traffic, many residences in the condos, and children needing to get safely to schools. Let's safeguard sufficient space for family dwellings in this neighborhood. Squishing a house onto such small dimensions is incongruent with the established neighborhood. 8.1 feet is not even close to the required 25 feet. This is a permanent change that will harm the neighborhood. These two low-quality properties would not encourage upkeep in the neighborhood and would reduce property value. Also, please remember that the condo area across the street already has very little green space. Our family home will be affected in several ways. There is already periodic flooding in our backyard, standing water, and some trouble with water in our basement. Having another house will only increase problems with water runoff. Also, the subdivision would infringe on our backyard privacy in three ways. Not only will this proposed house have to be very, very close to our backyard, but lovely large trees will be cut down, and then we will be exposed to the condos across the street. Also, those residents will have just another small house to stare at instead of a wooded yard. When it comes to making significant changes to a neighborhood, we ask you to not make permanent changes that aren't clearly positive or have lasting benefits for our community. There has been a dramatic reduction of trees and green spaces in our area in the last 25 years. This needs to be reversed. We need to preserve the green space and healthy sustainability of our town for next generations. We appreciate the work you do for our community. Thanks for your time and consideration. Signed, Gary Andrea Bridger Keegan and Gemma Dick. So it's a family project. They did this together. They will be returning to live at their house on August 1st.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to object or have any questions? Okay, sure. Again, you can take the podium, state your name and address, and you don't have to take as long as Mr. Clausen did.
I won't.
But you can say what you like.
I'm Elizabeth Dick. We live across the street on Barkman.
Okay.
In the condo, and I'm sure you have policies that you need a certain amount of space for a house, and this looks very small. There's a big hydro pole in front there, too, and that's putting a house in somebody's backyard, and I don't think you allow that too often, do you?
I would say, I won't answer the question now, but thank you for your thoughts. Thank you. Anyway, anyone else wishing to object or have any questions? Okay. You've seen how it works. Go ahead. Please state your name and address.
My name is Elena Geisberg, and I live at 205 Barkman, so I'm the lot on Barkman right up against the B there. It was my letter, I think that was referred to earlier, that you guys received in advance of the meeting, and I just want to reiterate that we were very pleased as a neighborhood 12 years ago when the variance was denied, and we've been able to enjoy that green space and enjoy our neighborhood since then. I just wanted to point out that the reason, the biggest reason that I was given at that meeting was the busyness of the street, and that the street has only increased in busyness with Shoppers Drug Mart being built and the two condominiums, which are wonderful neighbors, we're very happy to have them. Mill Creek's entrance comes out onto Barkman, which makes it busy, and with the expansions of the three schools down Barkman, Clear Spring, sorry, Stony Brook Middle School, Southwood, and SR have all increased traffic along Barkman, and we would really like to see for the neighborhood and for the safety for this to be denied. And the other stuff, I think, has all been repeated already, so.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to object or have any questions? Okay.
Yvonne Schrader, 421st Street. I regularly walk my dog and cross Barkman. It is often a sprint to get across, so it's difficult to see the traffic that is coming toward Main Street. When homes are built on small properties, often there's not enough room to park more than one vehicle, or not even one vehicle, so parking results along the street. So we're peeking around bushes, and we're peeking around parked vehicles. Even as someone who drives to work every day and tries to maneuver that corner, it's tricky because, again, it's difficult to see the vehicles coming. So if a home is built on this corner, that just increases the number of cars that are parked along the street regularly, so that's why I would object. Please.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to object or have any questions? Yeah, go ahead. Mr. Remple, you may need to just step aside there for a second. Thank you.
My name is Henry Dick, and I'm from 388 First Street, 209. My objection is, I have to speak for the dead. There's beautiful trees on that property, and they're probably 35 years old, or maybe even more. And to cut them down for what? Not in my lifetime. I'd rather crawl over and block the road. I don't see that that's a possibility. I object too strongly.
Very good. All right, is there anyone else wishing to object or have any questions?
Kristi Saper, 426 First Street. I have three children, two of them who are in school and one who will be in school in a few years, and as it has been mentioned before, crossing that street is incredibly difficult and sending my kids to school with that much traffic and possibly more traffic would be a bit worrisome for me, so that's it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to object or have any questions? Seeing none, does the applicant wish to speak any further? Okay.
Well, it's nice to hear that's such a great property. Are the council going to help us pay any taxes on that? Or maybe we should build a house on it?
Because it's just going to be a smaller, tired home for us. We're going to keep the Remple property. It's just for us, one with two vehicles, and we will have them on a, not on cover in the street.
We don't park on the street.
And we are gone, we are gone half the time. We live in Florida in winter time, so it's not going to be any extra traffic at all. And we have planned, already planned to remove a lot of the trees because there'd be a nuisance there.
Okay, very good. Thank you. There are, there might be some questions for you.
Okay.
Please stay at the podium if you can. Councilor Penner, you have a question?
Yes, please. Through you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Obviously, you own the property. What's in the existing house right now? Is that a rental?
Yes, it's a rental house for us already.
The other one is a rental. Ours is, will be moved. Want to move in a smaller, the lots?
The house will stay as a rental, and it has been.
Yeah, so my question is, why don't you just ask the renters to leave, and you live in the other?
No, no, I don't want that house, no. I want a smaller house like that, and it's a good, it's a good income property for us for the last 15 years, and we needed income, and we want to keep it.
Thank you. Further questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. I will now close the public hearing and open the council meeting. Council, we have a variation request in front of us. How would you like to proceed? Councilor Siemens.
Motion to deny.
Motion to deny, second by Councilor Swagstra. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back when I was elected 12 years ago, one of the things that council had been doing on a regular basis, taking corner lots and subdividing, allowing it to happen and putting lots. So there's some examples of that in Steinbach. One would be Wilson and Goosen on the corner there, and there was that house built there. The other one is a block away from its current location, Craker and First, where corner lots were split like the request is here, and other smaller properties were built. And so that took away the green space from one large property, and now we have two properties which have very small lots, because the other issue here is the variation request that would come up if this was approved. We have also denied them. We've denied them in various locations, including Home Street and Stonebridge Crossing, among others. We've denied them in various places because the end result is that it isn't a good thing to do, in my opinion, because it makes two homes that have very small yards, and they are good rental properties. It might be good for new families, but those homes also turn over a lot. The other reason that I am objecting to this is it's on a very busy corner. It's not only a busy street, it's a busy corner, and the driveway would come out very close to that corner, and it would cause havoc. I know that that stated there would only be two vehicles, but it's still an issue. And the third reason is that it's, this is Zone C1 in our community plan, and our community plan is, has been well thought of. Our community plan isn't about today and tomorrow. It's about 10 years and 20 years from now, of how we want to see the downtown core develop. So for all those reasons, I don't think this would be advantageous to the city to allow this.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will support the motion to deny. I think we need to consider a number of factors here. First of all, the variation request here is significant. The minimum square footage required for a property of this nature is 5,500 square feet. The proposed property would be 4,247. That's a significant variance. But an even bigger variance is that instead of a 25-foot backyard, we would, there would be an 8.1-foot backyard. That is a substantial difference. And so our staff recommendation from our city planner and such is to deny. Now, we also consider that significant, a significant number of neighbors have come to express concerns. We factor that in. Public hearings do matter. We do listen. We do take that into consideration, and we've certainly heard loud and clear that there are those concerns. And thirdly, as Councilor Siemens has made reference to, we have to think in the long term. I understand what the Heberts are saying in regards to that their intention is to live there, and that the two of them themselves, while they use the property, would, the amount of traffic would be minimal on that property, but this variance isn't for just as long as they happen to live there. This is forever. This means that whenever any future people move into that house for any reason at all, it's already been done. It's already there. So we have to make decisions not based on what we hear the intent of one of the applicants in regards to what they personally will do for a period of time. We have to decide the variance based on what is the best long-term plan for the property, and the best long-term plan for the property is not to squish in a building that simply doesn't fit.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councilor Fair.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We're, I know we're dealing with lot number two, but the other lot is going to be a problem as well, because we will also not have a 25-foot rear yard. It'll have a 4-foot rear yard. So if you look at both those things, it's just not a very good scenario, so I will support the motion.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anything in closing? Call for the question. All those in favor of denying. All right, council, we will now actually move number 9I, and that is a subdivision, 4451 2018-8015. This is on page 83 to the, this spot, because it also has to do with, it's very property, and we've been discussing that. Mr. Workinteen, do you have anything further to add?
Just in, just to confirm, this application for subdivision is related to the file, and as council has decided to deny the application for variance, recommendation is that council also deny the application for subdivision.
Thank you. Council, how would you like to proceed? Move to deny?
Move to deny.
Thank you. Seconder, Councilor Swagstra, any further discussion?
No.
Anything further from council? Call for the question. All those in favor of denying. All right. Now, council, 6C. We'll move to the conditional use, CU 2018-03. This is on page 25. This is in regards to 131 PTH 12 North. Mr. Workinteen, I'll ask you to introduce this, and then we'll go from there.
This, as you mentioned, is an application for conditional use filed CU-2018-03, property of 131 PTH 12 North. Owner of the property is Canadian Tire Real Estate Limited, with the application for the conditional use being Sinex Manufacturing, Inc. Purpose of the application is to allow a digital advertising sign to be located on the northeast corner of the subject property, as is indicated in the attached material within council's package. Notices as required under the Planning Act have been issued. There is no written correspondence on file. With respect to the application, although typically advertising signs are intended to alert the traveling public on public rights of way of goods and services that may be offered, this one is unique, and it actually faces the opposite way, partially into one of the city's parks. However, administrative review does not indicate any concerns with any undue impact on the activities within the park. Therefore, administration recommends council approve.
Thank you. We do have the applicant here today. Does applicant wish to speak?
Yes.
All right. Please tell us how this is going to benefit all the people in the park. Go ahead.
Phil Remple, 850 Main Street, Sinex Manufacturing. The, one thing which wasn't added, which was in there, is that they allowed third-party advertising. That was not brought up, so just that.
Thank you. Anything further? All right, are there any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I will close the, sorry, let me ask the question. Is there anyone here wishing to object or have any questions to this file? Is there anyone here wishing to object or have any questions? Is there anyone here wishing to object or have any questions? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Council, how would you like to proceed? Councilor Penner?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Second by Councilor Funk. Go ahead.
Yes, this sign appears to have no negative effects on either the park usage or the usage for the people that are nearby driving through, Tim Horton's, and I believe that, I know it's a great place for a sign, so I think that's, there's no reason to deny.
Thank you. Councilor Funk, anything further?
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. We're seeing these signs pop up, these advertising signs pop up all over Steinbach. I've been in that drive-through myself, and I've read what's on that sign, and I think it's going to be a great addition to advertising for this, for the business and for third-party, and we'll see who adverse effects on the highway or any vision or any blockage, so I say we.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councilor Fair.
I have a question with administration.
Go ahead.
There's no problem with people advertising digital signs for other people on their property. Is there?
Mr. Workinteen, go ahead.
The, the application as advertised was for a digital advertising sign. The term "advertising" does refer to third-party messages as well as the messages that may be provided by the owner of the subject property, so it, it is within the application. That is the subject that are being considered.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Anything in closing? Call for the question. All those in favor. Carried. Thank you. We now have the delegation. Thank you, Mr. Remple. We now have a delegation from the Calvary Chapel. This was a late addition. I know we had, had numerous informal discussions in the past, and so those discussions now culminate in this delegation. So go ahead. Please state your name and address, and we'll give you 10 minutes.
10 minutes, wonderful. I'm Robert Balfour, Number 1 Beaverbrook Drive, Steinbach, Manitoba, and I'm a pastor by And I'm a pastor by trade, so, 15, right? Just kidding. I'm here as the team-leading pastor of Calvary Chapel, and I'm here with Greg Friesen and Kelsey Penner, who are members of our church expansion team, and I'd like to talk to you about the parking around the old SCU building. Calvary Chapel, which sits currently at the corner of Lilac and McKenzie, just south of Barkman Concrete, if you're familiar. We've been worshiping the Lord Jesus in Steinbeck for, since the early 1980s. Not me personally, but it was planted by Peter Brysky at that time, and we're currently a congregation of more than 250 people. And we have been exploring possibilities for either expanding or moving for, for years, ever since I came on staff, actually, seven years ago. And currently, this discussion and exploration has led us to the old Steinbeck Credit Union Building, which is 305 Main Street. And we have been discussing with the board, who have agreed to pursue leasing us the building for a long-term lease, and our church has also agreed to pursue leasing that building. So, that's where we're at. As I'm sure you know, the, the building currently sits empty, and it has for a few years. It is a really great building. I don't know if you've been in there lately, or remember your time in there. Not only with lots of potential for use as a church, but with lots of history in our city, hundreds of people have worked in that building, and thousands of people are members or have been members and customers during its decades-long use. And I could show you the office where my wife and I got our first car loan, to buy a car when we had our newborn child and moved back here. Me, for the first time, my wife has lived here a long, long time. As we're nearing completion of our due diligence activities, which have included getting our architectural drawings completed, so we would have a plan for use and to be able to bring it up to code for occupancy, one of the outstanding issues that requires resolution still is the issue of meeting parking code. As you know, the 300 block of Main Street requires a lot of parking for the offices and buildings on, the offices and businesses on the north side of the street, which makes it extremely difficult, I don't want to use the word impossible, but extremely difficult to find a business that can occupy that space and find parking as well, which is why we believe that we are actually ideal tenants for this property, namely because we're a church, we can schedule our meeting times for when the neighboring businesses and offices are not in use, or, and don't need the, the parking space that is, is very busy during the work week. So, I'm here to ask the city council if you can work with us to satisfy the parking requirements in the most efficient way possible for us and for the city. In particular, we're looking at Bylaw Number 170, sorry, 197.2, which states that two businesses can share parking space if they do not operate at the same time, since the majority of our parking needs can be scheduled when the Steinbeck Credit Union is not operating and the stalls would be available for use. Or to put it another way, we really don't actually need 100 empty stalls sitting there six days of the week during the day doing nothing, when we could share stalls when other businesses and owners aren't using those stalls. Like, currently at our property, our parking sits 90, 80, 90% empty almost every day of the week, which isn't actually the greatest use of space. And making an arrangement like this will keep that great building from sitting empty or perhaps being torn down if it can't be used for anything else. So, our desire as a church is to occupy this building that has sat empty for years, and to make it contribute to the vitality of Main Street, and to grow as a church, and to do good in our community, and to take down at least one for lease sign off of a downtown building for a really long time. So, thank you very much for considering this, Mr. Mayor and counselors.
Thank you. There may be some questions for you. We'll, we'll see. Any questions from counsel to the delegation? Counselor Penner?
Just a quick question through you. What's the timeline? What's your timeline for hoping to be in the property?
Really, as soon as possible. This is one of the last major pieces that we need to solve in order to sign a lease agreement with them, and then, once that is happening, we are ready. We've already been in communications with a builder who can do renovations and bring the building up to code, and I think they're ready to go as soon as we're ready to go. That's my understanding. Is that correct?
Thank you. Counselor Penner?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. Have you spoken with yours, perhaps to be neighbors, about this and the parking issues that you're facing?
Kelsey, do you have any input on that?
None.
No, I don't believe we have, as we would be leasing tenants of the SCU, that they're would be the ones that will, they're our main neighbors, but also they're, I think, who we would lean to to be the main discussion people with their other neighbors.
Thank you. Counselor Fair?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. I think we all know that a church's advantage is to grow, and do you ever see yourself in that position where you may be able to make use of that building more than just on a Sunday morning where it might conflict, or is that, is at that point you're going to build a, a nice big building?
Yeah, great question. So, currently the discussion, and again, nothing's been signed yet, but the discussion's been for a 10-year lease with the option to continue to 15, would go to 15 years. The hope would be that, yeah, we would grow to fill out that building, and then, you know, if we're kind of too big for those requirements, then you, you look elsewhere. We're not buying the property, so we're not getting married to it. The idea would be that if we did get too big for it, then we could move on. It's a really great fit for where we are, and we think it's a great fit for just having an occupant in that building that works at this time. Also, just to speak to the parking thing, because I think that's the question, right? Like, what happens if you actually need the building, not then? We have been in communication with Solomon, who owns a lot of parking, kind of kitty-corner from there, and he is open to talking about us renting space from him, so that if we did need parking space during the week, we could have allocated space within close walking distance that we could say, this is where you need to park if you're going to come for a meeting, or something like that.
Thank you. Counselor Swagstra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the answer to this question will be obvious, but I do want to ask you, just to make sure it's clear and on the record.
Thank you.
You would, of course, be leasing from the Steinbeck Credit Union, they're your primary neighbor, it's their spots primarily that you'd be parking on. Are they in full and complete support of this specific application that you're making here today regarding to using their parking during the week when the church is not in session?
Yeah, I believe so. So, two, three witnesses.
Thank you. Was there another question on this side? No? Anything further? Obviously, church has evolved over time, and, and some of the questions that may come up is that church is often on Sunday mornings traditionally, but things have moved around and, and things are evolving. Do you foresee that, and how would that be solved with the current scenario?
Yes, and so, I, I think what we're seeing is that, you know, if we're going to use this space, which we really would like to, the limitation would come that we would have to schedule our important events that would draw a lot of people for when we're able to use that parking. And so, that would be a limitation on the space, that we would have to go in there with eyes wide open, and I think that we would be willing to do that. But in the long term, the idea would be that if all of a sudden we do need this parking space so that people can come and, and be in the building at that time, beyond whatever we might have permanently allocated to us as part of our lease agreement, that we would have to make efforts to secure parking for those activities beyond this. So, you know, we, we realize that the last thing we would like to do is to say we're going to do one thing and then turn around a little bit later and abuse an agreement that we've made with anybody. It wouldn't go well with individuals of power that sit higher than any council member or mayor might.
Very good. Thank you. No further questions? Thank you. Then, I appreciate the time you've taken, and what we will do is, with counsel's permission, I think we do need to get some more information from administration on this. If we're comfortable, we will refer this to administration for a brief report, and then, and then, yes, Counselor Penner?
What's the timeline of that? It sounds like time is...
I, I think it should, the report, I know administration has been working on this already behind the scenes, trying to resolve it, but I think this, I, I, they have a lot of information already. I think two weeks would be appropriate.
Next council?
So, the next council meeting, then we get a report, a brief report back on some history, some options, and the pros and the cons.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. So, counsel, with your permission, we'll ask for that, and then we'll get that back in two weeks. Consensus? Thank you. Thank you. So, within two weeks, we should have a further discussion on that. All right. We will now move to reports and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Workantin. 8A, please.
This matter is with respect to the rural municipality of Hanover, who recently issued an advertisement with respect to renewing its development plan. There is a public notice that has been issued, with the expected public hearing to happen next week, Wednesday, June 27th. Was unable to have the information prepared earlier, but today, there was a fairly significant information package that was provided to members of council in your internal mail bin. However, with respect to the, the proposed application, administration has reviewed a number of key provisions within the proposed development plan. There are a number of concerns with respect to the policy changes that are being proposed, and the, a summary of administration's findings is provided on pages 2, 3, and 4 of that information package. Suffice it to say, view from administration is to recommend that counsel authorize the city of Steinbeck to object to the proposed development plan. Then, a formal letter would be prepared and submitted to the arm of Hanover prior to the public hearing next week, Wednesday.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Swagstra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will make the motion that we approve the city manager's recommendation.
Thank you. Seconder, Counselor Penner, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city managers outlined a few concerns, and this is something that, that whenever there are issues that need to be addressed, there is a formal process, and so, this motion just simply enables the city administration to move forward with sending a formal letter outlining some of those concerns. I'm certainly hopeful and confident that we will be able to address these issues over the, over the coming time, but it's just important to make sure that we, that we ensure the development happens in the best way possible.
Thank you. Further discussion?
I would just add that this is common practice, one documents of the significance I receive from municipality to municipality, so I think it's quite straightforward.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anything in closing? No? Counsel, obviously, this is something that has been evolving, developing over the last number of weeks. We do actually have, I know I spoke with the REVE today, I know we do have a meeting of the Hanover-Steinbeck Joint Task Force next week as well, where we'll be discussing some of the issues that we, we foresee. Obviously, we want to make sure that, we want to see them grow, and we want to see Blumner Mitchell grow, and we want to see orderly development, and obviously, the, the urban aspect of that is going to be important, and so, that'll be part of our discussions that we have with the Hanover Joint, Hanover-Steinbeck Joint Task Force, so looking forward to that. Call for the question. All those in favor? Carried. All right. 9A, we have the accounts payable in the back of the book. You've had a chance to review that. Can I have a motion, please? Counselor Funk, seconded by Counselor Penner. Any discussion? Anything further from counsel? Call for the question. All those in favor? Carried. We have the financial statement ending May 31st. Can I have a motion, please? Counselor Penner, seconded by Counselor Siemens. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor? We have building permits for May on page 39. You've had a chance to review those. There's a motion on the side of that page. Can I have someone move that, please? Counselor Funk, seconded by Counselor Siemens. Any discussion?
This is through you, just slightly under $5 million for the month, and $2 million of that, or almost $2 million of that is for, in addition for NAPA, so it's great to see a business grow.
Yeah, absolutely. Further discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor? We have the accounts receivable transferred to taxes on page 42. Can I have someone move that, please?
Business license.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I miss the business? Yes, I did.
I want to move to approve.
Thank you, Counselor Fair. Move to approve. This is page 41. I'm sorry. There we go. Page 41, we have business licenses, moved by Counselor Fair, seconded by Counselor Penner. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor? Carried. I heard someone saying business licenses over there, but I wasn't sure if it was a mosquito or business licenses. All right. We have accounts receivable transferred to taxes. This is on page 42. $25,000 approximately. Can I have someone move that, please? Counselor Penner, seconded by Counselor Swagstra. All those in favor? We have the 2017 financial report from Chambers Fraser on page 43. This is the consolidated financial statement. Can I have someone move this, please? The acceptance of this, please. Counselor Swagstra, seconded by Counselor Fair. Any discussion? Anything further from counsel? This is all old information in some regard. Call for the question. All those in favor? Carried. We have the PSAB-based budget for 2018 on page 75. Again, this is a repeat of some sort. On page 77, you have a resolution there, resolved that the city of Steinbeck receive and approve the 2018 PSAB-based budget. Can I have someone move that, please? Counselor Swagstra, moved by Counselor Penner. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor? It's great, it's good to have a unanimous consent on a budget. All right. Subdivision 4451-2018-8001. This is on page 78. Mr. Workantin?
This is an application for subdivision that has been made by the Steinbeck Community Development Corporation, which is a controlled entity of the city of Steinbeck. This is to subdivide approximately four and a half acres into two, two-acre parcels and a residual public reserve with respect to an anticipated sale of land to interested parties willing to, or interested in developing industrial land. Recommendation is for city council to approve the application for subdivision.
Thank you. How would counsel like to proceed? Counselor Siemens?
Wish to approve.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Swagstra. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is to subdivide property that is our, in our industrial park off of Acres Drive, and there are parties interested in purchasing that land, and we are, need to subdivide this property so that can take place.
Thank you. Further discussion?
To be said at all.
Thank you. Anything further from counsel? Counsel, obviously, we see that our industrial park is, is filling up, and piece by piece, it is being taken up. Obviously, these people wanted smaller pieces than the whole piece. Call for the question. All those in favor? Carried. Thank you. We'll move to 9J, Bylaw 2015. This is on page 103. Mr. Workantin?
This bylaw is a proposed update to the city's current building bylaw, Bylaw 2105. This particular bylaw was presented to counsel at SPC meeting of March 27th, 2018. Generally, the provisions and language within the bylaw that is present in your agenda package is essentially the same, and the current city building bylaw was passed in, I believe, 1977, and it was certainly due for, for a review and, and upgrade, specifically referring to comments that were made during committee. There are certain amendments or updates to different sections of the bylaw with respect to outstanding work orders in Section 6.14. That is a particular reference that builders and developers are expected to complete and resolve any outstanding work orders. There is specific requirements for sign permits, which although was proceeding in practice, has never been reflected specifically within the bylaw, Section 11.7. There is the specification of permit fees in Sections 11.27 and 11.28. And finally, the recommendation is to also include the requirement for an occupancy permit for all buildings and structures built within the city of Steinbeck going forward, and that's referenced in Section 12.5. Recommendation from administration is for counsel to give this bylaw first reading, and if that proceeds, the administration would conduct a final review and then submit it to counsel in the near future for second and third reading.
Thank you. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Fair?
For, for screening.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Penner, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I think the city administrator covered off pretty much everything, and it's, the old bylaw has served us well for many, many years, and I think it's just good that we renewed and updated, there are a few places where we needed updating, so we'll see what goes from there when it goes out here, so.
Thank you. Anything further? Anything further from counsel? Counsel, we've had a chance to review this in committee, and now we have it in front of us. Obviously, we're updating something from almost 40 years ago is probably an appropriate thing. Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. Any questions of counsel? Counselor Fair.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On June 15th, the province issued an expression of interest for infrastructure projects, and I see that there are some things here that are kind of close to our heart, and so I would like to ask that we put this on our study session for July, so that we can discuss it further. There are some things like community culture and recreation infrastructure included in the expression of interest, so I'd just like to make sure that we don't miss opportunities that are available to us.
Thank you. And there's a deadline on that, is that right?
Yes.
It's in August, I believe?
Yes.
Thank you.
August 10th.
We can put that on the agenda, that would be part of the discussion of our study session, so, yeah, we can do that. Thank you. Counselor Penner.
Mr. Mayor, I was wondering if you would allow me to put a motion on the table this evening and...
You may.
See where it goes from there?
Yep.
While that's being passed, I'll read the motion and see if we get a seconder.
Go ahead and read it, and then we will...
Thank you. Whereas the Steinbach Arts Council has regularly requested funds to help upgrade its current facility, including at an October 10, 2017, presentation to city council; whereas the Steinbach Art Center is located in an older building that is owned by the City of Steinbach; whereas the Steinbach Art Center received a $65,000 grant from the ClearView Co-op Community Spaces Program; whereas the City of Steinbach would like recreation and culture capital projects to be done with both public and private funds; therefore, be it resolved that the City of Steinbach match the $65,000 Co-op Community Spaces grant for the Steinbach Art Center for the purpose of building improvements; be it further resolved that the funds for these upgrades come from the Recreation and Culture Reserve.
Thank you. Is there a seconder? Counselor Penner, go ahead.
Thank you. For the past seven and a half years, we as a council have discussed the importance of recreation and culture projects having support from both private and public funding sources. But here's the thing, in the past seven and a half years, we have not actually engaged or proceeded with any project of this nature, to my recollection. The Curling Rink project was supposed to, but didn't, and the options we have had for other potential projects have been too large in scope for our city, but now before us, we have the opportunity to proceed with a project that is desperately needed and well within our capacity. The Steinbach Art Center is in urgent need of facility upgrades. The Arts Council has repeatedly told us this during the numerous times they have presented to us over the years. Part of the challenge has been that the center's need for improvements has been overshadowed by the performing arts center debate and discussions on what that project would have meant for day-to-day programming space. However, even if an opportunity for facility upgrade becomes available in the not-too-distant future, it could still very well take years for it to actually happen, and the art center building is at the point where it cannot wait any longer. Whatever upgrades are done to it now will still be well worth it. This motion also brings to light that our grants policy needs to have more flexibility. Normally, we would only consider a grant like this if the Steinbach Arts Council would come to us and specifically request a $65,000 matching grant. Then we would delay it until our November study session where we would go through grants requests. But as mentioned previously, the Steinbach Arts Council has come to us many times with requests that we have taken as information but not actually done anything about. And the fact that this motion is not taking place at our November study session should not compromise our policy. Our policy should have the flexibility to respond when the opportunity arises. All this to say that now we have the perfect opportunity to give a grant that is for capital and can be used in tandem with a private grant for much-needed improvements to the Steinbach Art Center building. For these reasons, I ask that you support the motion.
Thank you. Counselor Penner.
Thank you. Yes, this motion to match the grant is one that I strongly support. We have seen, as Counselor Penner mentioned, the deterioration of that building and the struggle that the Arts Council has to maintain it in order to have their programs operate at capacity. So, that has always been top of mind, I think, for most of us, that we need to address those issues somehow for them, and because exactly of the other conversations that we've had around a performing arts center or what to do, that has really been put on the backburner. So, here's an opportunity for us to match those funds and give them a bit of a boost and make sure that their building can fully function as an art center that we can be very proud of. We're very proud of the art center itself and the programs they run. I hear they're one of the best-operated, best-run arts councils in Manitoba, so I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that they can do what they do and provide a service for all of our citizens.
Thank you. Counselor Funk.
Thank you through, Mr. Mayor. I will support this motion because I believe it makes the most of private grant. We can double the grant, and we can get so much more done in this building that is technically showing its age right now. The Arts Council have come to us several times, asking for repairs done to that building. Let's not forget, this is our building, so this is an asset that we're getting. It's win-win for, it's a win for the Arts Council, they'll be able to weather a few more years in that building, and we will also have, we're going to be building an asset for ourselves later on when they're in a new building, a different facility. So I think this is a very good idea, and I think we should go with this. Also, I like our grant policy. I like it very, that we are committed to capital grants, and that's what this is, is a capital project. But I do see that we need flexibility during the year, that we can come, that entities can come to us, ask for, and we can match other donations that are given by other community, like the ClearView Co-op, and that we can go forward with this, and I'm just losing my train of thought here, but I'll get it. But no, I just think that this is a great idea. I think we need the flexibility in our grants policy, and I'd like to see that we, I like to keep many parts of our grant policy, but I'd like to see the flexibility, and I'd like to see if we can discuss that at a later date.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yep, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the resolution here says for the purpose of building improvements. Can I get clarification? Are we talking about, because a lot of the discussion we're hearing sounds like we're talking about structural improvements to the building, or are we talking about sort of the internal renovations, or is that not really intended to be specified within here?
It's not intended to be specified, but if I could expand on that. For example, they recently had their preschool graduation, or whatever they call it, and during that evening, when there were over 300 people at the building on a hot evening, their bathrooms don't work, there's backup, right? So, to me, it doesn't matter what it's for, but I, my assumption is that it's going to be for projects that are desperately needed like that, so it's not necessarily structural. But to me, it doesn't matter either way, that you would use it for structural or for actual, I guess, either way it's capital, so.
Thank you. Counselor Swagstra.
Yeah, so just to follow up, so then is this, so, or is the motion then saying that the Arts Council would have full discretion over the funds, or is the city giving guidance in regards to what would be the most, you know, because a lot of the conversation I'm hearing is regards to improvements to the building because it's a city building? So I'm just like, who would make the decision in regards to the types of improvements that are made to the building?
Well, I don't want to micromanage what they need or what they don't need, but if we want to request what they're suggesting or recommendation, we can do that, but at the same time, they know what they need. I don't want to be too heavy-handed on what capital, specific capital improvements we want them to do.
Thank you. Who is first here? Counselor Funk, then Counselor Penner.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to just make a statement to Counselor Swagstra. They have a list of things they want to fix. I think, I think to just, to leave them to it, to fix the most urgent items, because they've come to us at different times, I think last year in October, and they had a full list of things that needed to be fixed there. I think if we just let them go through that list, let's remember, too, they're looking at taking the artists from the center and using them for volunteer work. So, if they're not paying a wage, this money's going to be multiplied even further to a benefit towards the city.
Thank you. Counselor Fair.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I see this as a somewhat unusual request here. I'm not opposed to supporting something there, but to just go and say, well, we're going to give you something, I think it's kind of reactionary right now. I would rather see us doing something where we maybe go and have a concrete plan to move forward and not just throw money at something, and we don't know what else is coming down the pipe, so I, I'm a little bit torn, and I think, right now, I don't think I would support it as it is here. I think I'd like to see a little bit more information.
All right. Further discussion? Counselor Swagstra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I genuinely have mixed feelings on this one, because I understand the, there is a case to be made for these improvements, there's no question about it. I mean, the Arts Council came before the city in a presentation last, I remember the presentation very well, there were a list of things of significant concerns to the building in terms of, that affect the functionality of the building, and this is a city-owned building, and so, it is a city asset. And so, this is a little different than a simple grant to an organization in regards to, you know, it's different because it's in a city building, and the money would be directed to go towards improving the city building. But I also understand where Counselor Fair is coming from in regards to, it does come across as a little ad hoc. We do have a grants policy in place, we do have procedures, and I understand they received this grant from the ClearView Co-op Community Spaces Program, that is great, there's definite potential here, but I would like to see this fleshed out a bit more. I would like to see some, because if the arguments are primarily that this is some much-needed improvement to a city-owned building, that of course, it benefits the organization using it, it benefits the city, and is an asset for the city, then as a city, then we should have a little bit more planning in regards to how this is actually going to work. And so, for example, if there is, you know, if we identify that, you know, which concern's the most urgent, and it turns out that the most urgent one is a little bit more, well then maybe we should do that, and if it's a little bit less, we should do that, and to just arbitrarily say $65,000 plus 65, now it's 130. So I have concerns in regards to that. So, I understand the intent of the motion, but unless I have more information in regards to exactly how this would work, I'm not comfortable basically taking a fairly significant detour from our grants policy.
Okay. Further discussion? Counselor Siemens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with the motion, but I am also, I'm the same situation, where I'd like more information on what they're going to do. Torn because we ask our federal and provincial governments for money so that we can do with it, with it which is unencumbered, so that we can make the best decision what we can for our community, and we use it in that regard. And so, here's an opportunity for us to do that with a community group, provide them with funds, and let them make the decision what they think is best. But I also agree with Counselor Swagstra, where it is a city building. The other side of this is, it is a city building, and we haven't done our part in upgrading it and keeping it up to code over the years, and we have fallen on desperate times. So, the Steinbach Arts Council is not in a position to build buildings, to do capital projects, to do all those things, because that isn't their form of expertise. Their expertise is providing culture and programming for the community, not structural issues. But having said that, this is a city building, and the city has not done due diligence in keeping up with that building and keeping things in shape, so I would vote in favor of this motion, simply because we need to provide them with the funds then to take care of our building.
All right. In closing, administration just has a question, and then, yeah, or a comment.
Just perhaps a comment, if I may, and then a question for counsel for clarification. My understanding is the grant that has been approved by Co-op does have a time limit of two years to be spent, so there does not appear to be a particular emergency with a hurry to spend the funds in that respect. Secondly, a question, there are terms of reference with respect to the lease between Steinbach Arts Council and the City of Steinbach. There are a number of particular types of maintenance and improvement items with respect to the building that are the responsibility of the Steinbach Arts Council, and a number that are the responsibility of the City of Steinbach. Is the intent of counsel to permit these grant funds to be spent on items that are typically the sole and full responsibility of Steinbach Arts Council, as opposed to directing the city share of these matching funds to be used for structural components that would be the city's responsibility as a landlord?
Those are all very important questions. Thank you. Counselor Penner, you wanted to say something?
Sure. First of all, I would like to respond that I don't believe this is reactionary, ad hoc. What is the point of a group like the Steinbach Arts Council presenting as much as it does? Because we hear from them fairly regularly, in October, presenting what they've needed, what they need to do. It's not like they haven't presented and given us a list, I don't remember offhand what their priorities are. This isn't ad hoc. They have a list of projects that need to get done at the facility, so to say that this is just reactionary because they got a grant, does not make sense. This is an opportunity we have to actually do what we've been talking about doing, which is partnering with private money to get some of these capital projects done, so the money goes further, and it's not just on the city to fund these projects. So in my mind, this is exactly the type of thing that we want to do, even if it comes at a different time of the year than we're normally, normally used to doing it. The other thing is, we've never been in the business of micromanaging what groups we give money to. We give grant money to, more particularly, the four big groups, we never tell them what to do with their grant money. So now, all of a sudden, we're talking about, well, we need all the details of what they want to do to commit. That's an interesting comment to me, because that's not something we've traditionally done, so I'm not sure why in this situation it's all of a sudden important.
All right. Counsel, we have a couple of options in front of us. I think, first of all, I think we have to say clearly that around this table, there's a lot of support for what goes on at the art center and what, and we also all know that that building is in need of repair, and we also know that there are enhancements that they would like to see in that building as well, and I think we all recognize that, and it's clear, from all the various statements across the table here. I think there are still quite a number of questions. There are some questions that administration is raising, which are important questions. There is an opportunity for us to either move forward with this motion today, or we can table it for future, after we have further discussions and some things answered. But I do recognize clearly that we have around this table a lot of support for what the art center is doing, and we have a lot of support in doubling, or using private money to leverage public money, and I think that's common sense as well. When it comes to this specific project, yeah, we do have some questions about what exactly are they planning to do, and how that fits into our lease, and those are important questions. And so, I think we also see clearly that there are funds put in the Recreation and Cultural Reserve specifically for these types of things, and so, I think that's fair as well. But I think we as counsel have to decide whether we want to table this, or whether we want to call for the question, and I would invite just a brief comment on that before we move forward. And I'll give the mover first crack, if you'd like.
I made the motion, I'm comfortable with moving forward, as is.
Okay. Further discussion? Counselor Swagstra.
My preference would be to table it. I think the best way to approach this is that if we are going to have a change in policy in terms of how we're approaching grants of this nature, then let's actually redo those sections of the policy and do this on a proper permanent basis and look at some of those things, because we're setting a precedent here, so I would prefer tabling.
Tabling till?
I would suggest that we would table it to our study session, where we can look at some of the details in, you know, this July. Okay? Further discussion? Further thoughts? Counselor Penner?
One of the things that was mentioned by administration was if the funds would be given to them for things that they thought was necessary for the enhancement of the building, or that it was what the city had, would determine to be. I think that's, as Counselor Penner was mentioning, that is not the intent of what this matching is. What this matching is doing is taking advantage of private money so that the city can do what it should have done a long time ago.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Fair.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Let me be clear here, it's not that I oppose the intent of this, I just think that it's a wrong way to go about it, and I think that our administrator gave us enough information here that it's really, there's other avenues that we can take to do this, and so I think that, I would like to see it get done as well, and as far as I understand, the $65,000 grant... as I understand, the $65,000 grant from Clearview Co-op is not dependent on us matching it. And so I think I'd like to see us discuss this at length before we make this decision.
Okay, further discussion? Counselor Funk.
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I think we should strike while the art is hot, the art is hot right now, and we can get a lot of mileage out of this money, putting the two grants together, and yeah, I think we should just, we should go for it, I think the details will work themselves out.
Thank you, further discussion? Counselor Siemens.
I agree that this needs further discussion, we need to table it, we need to table it because I would like to hear more from the city standpoint, from the administration, where we're at, but I would agree with tabling it at this time.
All right. Point of order to administration, or advice from administration, we don't normally table a lot of things, do we just, do we simply ask that to be made into a motion now? Is that correct?
I'm trying to search my memory banks, it's been a long time.
I believe, I believe I will make the, as the chair, I will then make the decision that if someone would choose to make a motion to table it over and above the motion that's presently there, we will then table the motion, or vote on tabling the motion. If that fails, then we'll vote on the motion itself. Okay? All right. Counselor Fair moves to table, seconded by Counselor Swagstra. Discussion?
There's enough doubt here, I think it's worth it, and we may end up spending more money than what is $65,000, so I think it's better to have more information.
Okay, just to clarify, it's a motion to table to study session, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So, yeah, seconder, Counselor Swagstra.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I support the motion to table. Again, I'm not opposed to giving this serious consideration, but let's do it properly. There's been a whole lot of things I've been raised, in terms of the lease arrangement, in terms of our grant policy, in terms of the fact that the grant isn't dependent on us partnering with it, and the reality is, we just got this motion before us right now. Normally, something of this nature, there would be more discussion, because we're talking about a change in policy and a change in approach, then if we are going to change approach and change policy, then let's do it properly.
Thank you, further discussion? Counselor Penner.
I will not support the motion to table. I feel that this does not actually change our policy, what it does, it does deviate from our policy, but it does not set precedent, nor does it change it. What it is doing is allowing us to react to something that is in front of us.
Thank you, further discussion? Anything in closing? All right, motion to table, all those in favor of tabling? All those opposed? All right, so we'll table it. I want to make a statement, though, and that clearly for myself, this, the intent of this is good, and the intent of where this goes is correct, and I want to commend Counselor Penner on bringing this forward. We do need to support them, we do need to, but more details, and then we can proceed, and let's do that fairly quickly. We have eleven A, the Minister of Municipal Relations, the Mobile Disadvantaged Transportation Program information on page one-twenty, sorry, any other questions of counsel? All right, Minister of Municipal Relations, page one-twenty-one. Take that as information. We have the Dutch Elm Disease Program on page one-twenty-two. Take that as information. There's no other business, can I have a motion adjourned, please? Counselor Penner, seconded by Counselor Siemens. All those in favor? Carried, thank you.